Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the MyHingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. This is April 1st, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM, and I am convening this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held remotely and/or in person as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I will note for the record that participating this evening is Liz Klein, myself, Joe Fisher, and Select Board Member Bill Ramsey is traveling and is unavailable today. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item I see on the agenda is approval of minutes, and I think we have two minutes, November 20th and December 17th. Liz, are you prepared?
I am.
Then are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I will make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 20th, 2024.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I'll take another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 17th, 2024.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Those minutes are both approved. Next, we move on to a proclamation where we will proclaim April 9th, 2025, Wednesday, as Education and Sharing Day in the Town of Hingham. And I will begin to read the proclamation to share it with Liz Klein. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Education and Sharing Day. Whereas Hingham is a community that is committed to excellence in education, recognizing that a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of our state, our country, and our society at large. And whereas Hingham recognizes the important contribution of its teachers, paraprofessionals, school administrators, and staff in assuring high-quality education for our children. And whereas April 9th, 2025 marks what would have been the 123rd birthday of Rabbi Menachem Schneerson, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, a leader who was devoted to educating people worldwide and who demonstrated a profound respect for diversity, inclusiveness, and equal justice. And whereas Rabbi Schneerson recognized the importance of building character and moral values as well as intellect.
And whereas in 1978, the United States Congress established his birthday as a national day to raise awareness and to strengthen the education of our children. And whereas, beginning with President Jimmy Carter, a federal proclamation has been issued declaring Education and Sharing Day USA and celebrating the work of Rabbi Schneerson as a thinker, leader, and teacher who recognized the limitless potential of every human being regardless of their background. And whereas, we affirm our support for educational and social service institutions that empower our children and inspire persons of all ages. And whereas, we call on all residents of Hingham to increase their energy and dedication to the education of our youth. And whereas, we call upon government officials, educators, volunteers, and citizens to reach out to those within your communities and work to create a better, brighter, and more hopeful future for all.
Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, Education and Sharing Day in Hingham, voted this first day of April 2025 by the Select Board, and I'm prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to proclaim Wednesday, April 9th, 2025, as Education and Sharing Day in the Town of Hingham.
And I second that motion. Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We now move on to adopt and sign the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Mr. Mayo, if you can give us a summary, please.
Sure. So statutorily, the warrant is the Board of Select, the Select Board, sorry. It's only been four years. The Select Boards. The Select Board has authority over what goes into the document, but what's in the document ironically is the charge in large part of the...
Is your mic on?
It is.
Okay.
What's the problem?
It might be the sun shining in through the window.
We good? Sebastian?
I turned it up. Let's see.
Okay.
I'll just maybe bring it back.
Okay. Yep. So the warrant, as I was saying, is the purview of the Select Board. What goes into the warrant is the Select Board's purview. What is in the warrant, once it's in there, is the purview ironically of the Advisory Committee, as well as a bunch of, you know, there's a lot of reports in there that are the purview of the, of the different committees that write those reports. There's a lot of important legal notices that happened. Those are the purview of the moderator, et cetera. But what happens in this, what goes into the report, the warrant, in terms of articles, is the purview of the Select Board, which is why annually we ask the Select Board to, to certify or are required by law to have the Select Board certify the warrants that are chosen and that are in fact in here are the articles, excuse me, the articles that are chosen and in fact in the warrant are the same ones that the Select Board has authorized throughout the process. This has been reviewed by myself, Art and Michelle, obviously Sharon is who put it all together, Mike Puozzo, John Coughlin, everyone has gone through it and identified that these are in fact the articles that were approved by the Board throughout the process.
Right. And just to summarize, the articles, each article is actually a question.
Yes.
Which, and the Select Board has in fact voted on each of the questions. The recommended motion is coming from the Advisory Committee.
Which is the answer to those questions.
Yeah, which is in fact the answer to those questions. And what we are voting on is actually directing the constables to distribute this warrant to all the residents of the town.
That's right. Exactly.
Liz, anything you'd like to add?
No questions on this. I did review it, and it matches what I was expecting, all the articles that we've reviewed, as Tom said, throughout the process over the last several months. I know this is quite a bit of work, so appreciate the team's effort on this. Also, new this year, I noticed a QR code for an electronic copy.
Yes, that's right.
So I'm assuming after we certify this, that the online copy will be updated as well.
Exactly. Exactly. It'll be updated tomorrow morning after your vote.
Okay, perfect.
So that someone with a phone can scan the QR code and up on their iPad or the phone will come to document.
They'll actually be able to download it, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Art, anything you wanted to add?
No, we're just, we're just excited to be at this moment.
Yes. That is true.
A lot of work has gone in, not just by the Select Board and not just by our staff, but by Advisory Committee, a host of other committees, and we thank everyone for their work. Any member of the public with questions about this? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt and sign the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant in the form attached here too.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The warrant is adopted, and we shall proceed to sign it. Next on our agenda would be an update concerning activities in downtown Hingham. And I believe, Art, you're going to give us a brief summary.
Yes, thank you. As you pointed out, there's been a lot of work focused on preparing for town meeting, but behind the scenes over the past few months, there's been a fair amount of attention invested into promoting growth in our downtown. It's one of our three commercial districts, you know, the shipyard, Route 3 area, as well as South Hingham being the third development or commercial district in town. What I'll do is just touch out a little bit on what we've been doing, but also what the town has been doing in partnership with, with others. Just touching on three, three broad areas. First, just relationship building and improving communication between the town and downtown stakeholders, as well as really identifying an opportunity to promote heritage tourism and leverage REV 250, which is an initiative that we've talked about a bit in past meetings. And last but not least, just touching on progress with regard to promoting cell service in the, in Hingham, particularly in the downtown area.
And sometimes here in Town Hall as well.
What I wanted to point out is that over the past few months, town staff has made a point to engage with Amy Brown, who is the Director of Discover Hingham, participate in their meetings and contribute in meaningful ways. For example, the most recently meeting, Susan Sarni, our Executive Health Director, and Emily Wentworth, our Community Planning Director, both participated and provided some basic feedback on how to apply for different health department permits and as well as how to work with the planning board. We all know that business people are very busy. Folks who are operating very small businesses don't always understand how the, how to access the town and what to expect of us. And that kind of engagement is an important part of building, building those relationships. Along the way, last month, we convened the first in what I expect to be a series of meetings involving town leadership alongside stakeholders in the, in, who either work or support our downtown, be it nonprofits or business owners. That dialogue is more focused and has been, I think, setting the foundation for taking things to the next level. And I think there are three areas that, where we'll be working over the next few months. First and foremost, just building on that, that point about permitting and making it easier for small businesses to access what they need to operate here in town. I'll be working with other department heads to develop a permitting guide that will, for commonly used or access permits by small business, really break it down, break down what is required of a business, but also what to expect from the town in terms of service, fees, how long different steps might take, just so that there's simplicity and clarity. But just as important, identify a person and contact information, so if somebody has a question, they know exactly who to call. A second opportunity is looking at ways to fill vacant storefronts. We've been talking about this for a while. It's an ongoing challenge for our downtown, our square area. And working with the South Shore Chamber, we've been able to access a training program that between the Downtown Association and the town will get a much better sense of exactly how we can identify entrepreneurs who may be interested in launching a business and get them into a storefront in collaboration with a property owner, you know, for a limited time period to test and improve their business plan, test and improve their business model, and along the way generate some, some interest that could lead to filling some of the vacant storefronts that we have. And the last but not least is certainly educating the community. You know, there's a lot of work that is being done by town staff, certainly a lot that's being done on the part of our nonprofit community. And I think there's a lot that can be shared with the community about what is happening and what to expect. And I think in the coming months, we'll be collaborating with other partners to get some, get some basic stories written for venues like the Hingham Anchor, just so members of the community can better understand exactly what we're trying to accomplish. I created a separate slide for what I think is the fourth and perhaps the largest or most interesting opportunity, and that is leveraging heritage tourism in the REV 250 period that we're in, that's being driven by the state, but provides the opportunity for Hingham to participate. We are in the lead-up to the country's 250th anniversary or anniversary of our birth. That was a defining moment for the country, certainly a defining moment for Massachusetts. The state, led by the Office of Travel and Tourism, is looking for ways to help draw attention to and celebrate what has happened here in Massachusetts. And we think Hingham, given our strong history and heritage in the revolutionary era, can play a part in that. So what we're looking to do is find ways to take advantage of what we have, share it with the community, share it with the world, and attract visitors to different events and activities that we will plan over the next year or so. That work will be done through a task force, our REV 250 Task Force, organized under Town Administrator Tom Mayo's purview, with the goal of coordinating and bringing together different people, different organizations that have capabilities, have resources, have events, and find ways to connect them, those events and those activities, also to our businesses, our retail shops and our restaurants, in a way to offer a visitor experience tied to a REV 250 theme, but adding a lot more value. If we do this well, and I certainly expect that we will, we'll attract new people that will participate and learn about Hingham's history and our, the cultural heritage that's part of that, but also take advantage of and support our, our businesses, particularly, particularly those in the square. The task force we're putting together includes the Downtown Association. It certainly will benefit from leadership from Deirdre Anderson, who leads the Hingham Historical Society, and others, just looking to leverage a whole bunch of different perspectives, a whole range of energy that can help us channel and offer something to the world. And I just want to be clear about this. It's, REV 250 is what you might call a tactical opportunity, but the idea of pursuing heritage tourism in honoring the town's character are fundamental to our master plan, as well as the economic development strategic plan that we're pulling together. So we, I think we have a way to, starting with REV 250, establish a sustained approach that can help elevate our, the square and harbor areas. Let me just end on cell service, and I'm certainly ready for any questions you may have. This has been an ongoing priority. We've heard from residents, we've heard from businesses, and we've got some progress to share. First and foremost, Verizon, which owns a facility at 30 Green Street, is in the final acts, if you will, of deploying cell infrastructure on their building at 30 Green Street. We've been told that it should be operational by the end of the month, which, and will, as soon as that happens, will be notified. It's important for folks at home and businesses to understand that while that infrastructure may be turned on, it might take some time for that, for the antennas to be optimized in such a way to have maximum impact. But we certainly expect that that location, depicted on this map here, will have, will improve performance, cell service performance in the square area. I also want to note that we are now amidst reviewing responses to an RFP that we issued to lease land at 25 Bear Cove Park Drive on the DPW footprint to a party that would commit to building cell infrastructure, a monopole, and in support as many different service providers as possible, located to the west of the square but with significant height, should help improve cell service in the square as well as other parts of town that need it. We're looking to make a decision soon. We're on track to move forward through a contracting process that, assuming we get to that, we're optimistic that we'll see new, we'll have something built and new service available late this year or early next. So that's it. In a nutshell, this is a portion of what we're doing for, to promote economic development in Hingham. It's focusing on one of our three commercial districts, and there's certainly more that we're doing.
All right, thank you. That was a summary with some, some powerful news, and it's showing forward progress. So particularly Verizon activating the infrastructure, I assume you'll get a call on your cellphone when it's activated.
Yes. I have that, I have that commitment from Verizon.
Liz?
Well, thank you, Art. I know you've been working hard on this behind the scenes, so thank you for, for sharing it with us tonight. All good news and lots of progress, so that's, that's exciting. I appreciate the commitment to supporting our downtown. I know you've been working with Amy Brown and, and the Downtown Association, as well as the Chamber, which is great. I was not aware of the permitting guide. That sounds like a useful tool and will make, make things more efficient. I am curious about the pop-up storefront training and definitely want to hear more about that. We don't have to go into details right now, but, you know, along with that, wondering how much we're engaging with the property owners in downtown. Some of the shop owners own the buildings, but I think the majority don't, so it's, there's a dynamic there too. And I want to make sure that, one, we're engaging with, with the property owners, and two, that we're sensitive to the needs of the shop owners. I think from what I've heard anecdotally, rents are going up even with vacancies, so I'm definitely sensitive to that dynamic and certainly don't want to see more vacancies. REV 250, very exciting. I know we've talked offline about that quite a bit. Love the partnership with the Historical Society. Do we have a kickoff timeframe for the REV 250 Task Force?
The Task Force will have its first meeting next week.
Okay, great.
Where we'll get everybody introduced.
Excellent.
Organized and oriented around.
... that something has to be posted. It takes two weeks to get the posting done, so expectations will be managed, communications will be better. And I think we'll try to dispel some of the myth that's out there that Hingham is not supporting the businesses, because that is a myth. I think the town is very committed to making that happen, so thank you for moving forward with that. With respect to the Task Force, Art, when you and I spoke about it, I, my understanding it was more sort of a private-public joint venture as opposed to something TA-directed. Has that shifted?
It has not shifted. Maybe I just need to be clear here. I think the purpose of this Task Force is to figure out how, as a community, we can come together and, and create a REV 250 agenda.
Yep.
Town government's great at a lot of things, but we're not necessarily great at putting events together, and we're not expert marketers. But what we can do is provide the convening authority through the Town Administrator's office to bring parties together and identify an agenda to work together and move forward. I think our role as, as town staff is to look for ways to support that effort. And there are certainly different ways that will become important going forward, ranging from identifying the right kind of permits to secure, being for given events of size, perhaps, being sure that public safety issues are addressed, support for grant writing efforts, those sorts of things.
Yeah, but I think there'll be a lot, a lot of the initiative coming from either Historical Society.
Yes.
Or private businesses. And I view it as a collaboration where the town will be providing some support, but you're not necessarily carrying the laboring oar all the time, because we've got a lot going on with staff. And it's nice to know that you're, you're a good backdrop for this, but it's, it needs to be community-driven to be successful, in my view. But this is really fantastic and looking forward to continued progress. And I know the, the folks in downtown are absolutely looking forward to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, anything you wanted to add, Tom?
No, thanks to Art for putting all that together, and I agree with you completely, Joe. We don't want to, we're not owning this, we're organizing it.
Right. Well put.
And the people on the committee will be doing a lot of the task heavy lift.
So with that, I don't believe we have any appointments this evening. So I will take comments from members of the public on items... And there she is. Deirdre. Good to see you virtually. Your hand is up.
Hi, friends. How are you?
Doing well.
Deirdre Anderson, on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society. And I'm sorry, I can't get my camera to work, but I just want to reiterate, we are so excited to partner with the town, and I am honored to be a part of the Task Force for REV 250. We have been working well with Art behind the scenes, and we are excited to roll out some exciting opportunities for the community to gather and commemorate the rich history that the town and its, our forebears have, have protected and preserved for so long. In 1976, the town and the Historical Society partnered for the bicentennial, and it's wonderful to be back here together again for the semi-quin centennial. And we're really looking forward to offering a robust opportunity for community members to gather together and build community further. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we look forward to working with you. Any other member of the public? Then we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports, beginning with Art.
I have nothing more to offer this evening. Thank you.
You've offered a lot already. Tom?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing else tonight, thank you.
Okay, so some folks have asked about our schedule for meetings this month. We will post them. My current inclination is that we're unlikely to have a meeting next week, but if anything pops, we will certainly let folks know. And with that, I am prepared to take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing and... calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.